Mike, could you give your closing? Qualities and reasons?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have a moment of silence to reflect on that. About you. And according to excuse Council members Hernandez and Ariigan. Ms. Gilgor, budget calendar.
It's time already.
Deer in the gold.
And it starts again. Um, yeah, so I just put together a pretty close calendar to what happened last year except that, well, this one starts a little bit later. Because last year I kind of got things started before I went on maternity leave and then they paused for like three months. But this one, um, I just have it starting like the first of August with department head requests and then it's going to fairly closely follow the schedule. Um, there are a couple of things that are moved up a little bit earlier. We got a little bit behind last year because of that break while I was gone. Um, but for the most part, it's pretty, um, it just meets all the statutory dates for budget, schedule and adoption of certain things and has us adopting the final budget at the first meeting in December as usual. So just if you guys can't go to sleep at night, go ahead and read this and let me know if you have any questions. Um, there are, I think, two workshops on here with the council and a finance committee review prior to final budget adoption, so. As well as the normal presentations that are done at county meetings.
Questions for Ms. Gilgor? Please, sure.
I know it's super early. But as you're losing sleep over the budget process, what is your kind of idea about how everything is going to look for next year? I mean, things have been feeling good, at least from my perspective, just this year. Are you kind of thinking that for, like, I mean, and I've been kind of looking forward to getting to this part, just to kind of see what we can do within reason?
Mm-hmm. Um, well, the big challenges are going to be capital funding and, um, personnel. I mean, those are two big things every year, so. Uh, I really can't speak to like the operating budget yet. I know the capital budget, we're gonna have to figure out financing for wastewater treatment plant and, um, I think we have the water projects pretty well covered for now, but like the lift station and treatment plant stuff, we'll have to see, you know, those are gonna be challenges to figure out what we're doing.
Cool.
Those terrifically vague, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's fine. I, I think it's good to, um, I don't know, I think that we, you've done a really good job. I, I've been excited about the things that we've been able to just basically approve. Um, so it's, I don't know. I think this is my four-year anniversary too, people.
Ooh, congratulations!
Thanks.
Whoa!
I was planning on the last time in, 2015, a special meeting?
Aww.
Yeah, anyway.
It's also my parents' anniversary, my sister's anniversary and Chopper, our Bulldogs' birthday.
See, July 2nd's a good day.
And the day I went into labor with Garland last year.
See? Well, you're welcome, College Place. For all of these things that Sarah and I have provided.
We are not to blame for Garland's birthday.
That has been informative.
No, so anyway. No, I guess I'm thinking like just over the last four years, like since I started, it's, it's just been such a big shift, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's exciting.
I, I, I mean, I would say we're moving towards stability because we've been funding the equipment replacement, uh, program and stuff and we're getting caught up there and then we're also doing, uh, good getting the various infrastructure projects done. I mean, the big ticket items is that treatment plant because ecology's really harping on us about that. The good news with it though, and it's gonna be coming to council soon, is, uh, I found out we did get approved for the, uh, two, there's like a 2.5 million, uh, loan you can get through Department of Ecology with about 600,000 forgiveness, I don't know. Uh, we did get approved for that, so.
I like free money.
Yeah, so they'll be coming forward soon, so I mean, that's the good part. But again, it's a really expensive project, but we really have to do it on our own accord because while I was out, because I checked, uh, seeing maybe if we could tag team on their plant that they're, it would put them over capacity, so there is no opportunity to share with them. And then the other thing for the water system, and we, I would say we wouldn't be doing this for next year, but start to put money away for it in two years, is we need an additional water storage tank.
Oh.
Uh, because while we're, while we're working towards stability on the wells, uh, in talking with Paul and Robert, uh, the current situation with our storage tanks is we don't even have a day's worth of water between all of the storage tanks. So on a personal level, it makes me nervous, so we need, uh, another storage tank somewhere. Likely even, depending on what happens with the UGA stuff, either west or south, it'll be in one of those two directions.
How much should, how much water should we have?
Well, well, it, well, I mean typically the target is to lea- at least have like about 24 hours. I mean, right now.
Usually it's two days.
Oh, well, I, I always thought it was 24.
Depends on this.
I teach everybody, I teach everybody to design, so it's two days.
It depends on like, what time of the year too. Yeah, obviously, yeah.
But, well, right, well, right now, at least according to Paul and Robert, we basically have about 20 hours worth of water in, in the tanks, which is not.
Full your bathtub.
So. We dramatically need to improve that, but those water storage tanks are quite expensive as is everything else that way, so that's something we're gonna have to figure out.
Don't necessarily want to repeat your question because that was, yeah, it's a really good question, but, I, but here we go. Um, no, but, you know, we've had these big projects, the wells.
Yeah.
And I guess on the horizon, something of that magnitude, not this next year, there is the waste, wastewater and that, but, but as far as large bond issues or anything, I mean, we're really, we don't think there's anything right now on the horizon, or is there? And I'm not talking about capital as far as vehicles or plant, but humongous projects on the horizon.
Southside Sewer.
The, the south, the southwest, the southwest sewer, because I'm trying to put the onus of that on a private developer, but, again, that re- that remains to be seen right there because we're talking percentages right now. There is gonna be some public exposure on that. I, I don't think I'm gonna be able to put the whole thing on the private sector.
Well, okay.
Other questions?
What's your bond capacity at? How are we looking for that?
Um, I haven't looked at it since last budget cycle. We haven't, um, done any, it really only comes to play with general obligation debt and we haven't looked at taking out any additional general obligation debt since I was looking at it back then, so. But we had plenty at that point, I'm just not sure, I could not rattle off a number for you.
Okay.
Um, but I can look into it and shoot you an email if you're that interested or.
I'm sure you have better things to do. But I guess, uh, I'm just thinking here, like, if, you know, we do have a huge bond or have some investment in infrastructure in the southwest area, or if there's something else unexpected, you know, have to remove a meteor or something that falls, um.
So, um, bonds for water and sewer are usually revenue bonds, which means the rate payers are taking care of the debt service on them and so they don't really count against our debt capacity.
Okay.
So, because theoretically, we're not using tax money to pay the, the debt service on them, but we're using rates and charges from customers.
Okay.
So they don't use any of that capacity up, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sure, yeah, separate entities essentially.
Yep.
The, the only thing that counts on our general obligation capacity is like, for instance, if we were doing things with municipal buildings excluding like public works or, uh, streets, for instance, even though it's a street fund for all intents and purposes, it's passed through our current expense and then, uh, parks, for example. So those are the, yeah.
One thing I just thought of when you, you were mentioning that, the revenue bonds and whatnot. Compensation for employees, I guess renegotiation of some salaries that are coming up, or?
Uh, yeah, I, I have Sean doing a salary survey for all the non-represented and then we're also doing that for police as well. Uh, I'll, I'll be very open about the police side. Uh, just unfortunately, the way our comparables have gone.
Yeah.
Uh, that is gonna be a bit of an increase because even if it were go, arbitration would still end up that way, looking where everyone else went, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's a, yeah.
I, I'm just forecasting that one.
Well, police is a, a supply and demand issue.
Yeah.
Mike and I were discussing, I think the other day, just casually about, the retention, how that actually pays back over time too, if you don't have to go through the office of the training expenses and the year or two of. And so some of that is a, is an expense, but some of it actually, to a certain extent, could net out over a two or three year period, you know, I mean, not completely, but it is somewhat mitigated, yeah.
But, but yeah, when, when I got here, when we went through the last negotiation with police, we were about in the middle of the pack and since that time, a lot of the other cities just went through their renegotiations last year. And since that time, it shifted, we're now we're at the bottom, so there's gonna have to be an equilibrium to occur on that, so.
Yeah.
And then the other that's in your agenda packet too for a budget calendar is also the survey, uh, include survey results from last year and then that'll be roughly the same one that goes out again for this year. Typically, we do, uh, I make a flyer with a QR code that goes out with it like Andys and Rogers and, uh, places like, and we have paper copies and also online where it's written of city departments and then what street project would you do, what would you start doing, what would you stop doing? General questions like that to glean where we're going and how receptive the community is to it. So, uh, all those questions have been, uh, in place for the last like two years and we've sent them out at this time, so they'll be going out again.
Mike, does the, does the public have access, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to color this one way or the other. Do they have access to this information?
Uh, as far as the results, yeah, it's always put up on the, those budget pages that I create every year for the budget portal. It's put up there.
This?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
And it's.
Also available through.
Yeah.
Right, I just, um.
Publicly available.
I mean, I guess I should have asked that a little bit differently. And the raw data could be requested?
Yeah.
Okay, for, for somebody to, to review or churn or, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's in survey monkey, so it'd be easier to pull out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions on budget calendar? Well, then, we're done on July 2nd.
Budget approved.
Moving right along. Mr. Gonzalez, tell, 2020 census.
Okay, uh, thank you.
More census too. I asked my question too soon.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I just came back from Association of Washington Cities Conference and they had PowerPoint and the census, uh, because there were quite a few folks worried about, various populations participating because it was out there about the question of if you're a citizen or not, luckily, that question get, just got struck down, so that's not gonna appear. Uh, but there still is a concern that, uh, the turnout will be depressed. So this is, uh, just a PowerPoint that essentially the Office of Financial Management from the state, uh, put out. Uh, so the census will be on April 1st next. And then it, it's used to essentially figure out essentially legislative districts and then, uh, federal and state funds and also for, uh, planning, decision making. Uh, basically, the state of Washington has received, when you break it out between pass-throughs cities and then from the state, a little over $2,300 per person essentially. Um, however, for every hundred households missed over a 10-year period, you could lose about $5.8 million, so it's very important, uh, to, uh, everyone participate. Uh, what they're doing this year, which is a, a bit different, because before it was mainly the paper surveys, is they're actually gonna have a portal for doing it essentially online, uh, where you can sell for a port online and then if they don't hear from folks, that's when they'll start sending out the census papers and so forth, uh, where there'll be about two or, uh, three pass-throughs to try to encourage folks to participate. Uh, there'll also be staggered mail-ins as well. And then also a special, uh, process for non-traditional households, so folks that don't speak English as the first language. Uh, there is also a grant program the Office of Financial Management is supervising this year, uh, whereby August, cities and other governmental units can turn in proposals to hire either interns or coordinators to help get out, uh, essentially getting people to participate in the census for, uh, populations that typically do not. Uh, next, okay. Uh, questionnaire, uh, is the 10-question in 10 minutes of the short form, so the name, sex, age, uh, relationship residence, race, ethnicity, housing tenure, uh, contact phone number for follow-up, the citizenship question did get struck down. Uh, there is going to also be the long form, which is the American Community Survey, where it has very extensive questions, but in essence, it only gets sent out to roughly about 10% of the population randomly. So most will get the short form, some will, about 10% statistically, uh, will get the long form. Next. Um, as far as, uh, answers being secure, there is strong legal, uh, provisions pertaining to this. Can't be used by, against, like, responded by another government agency or court. Okay, and then multiple languages, the, uh, internet portal will have essentially 12, nine English languages in it and the list is, uh, in that PowerPoint right there and then there'll also be a phone option, uh, as well. And then the census graph, as far as, uh, the, uh, various folks are heard to count, they have a state developed. Uh, and then challenge for historically undercounted deaths of various segments of population. The, uh, pionneled this in 2010 census, at least in this state, had been relatively difficult to count. Uh, again, because of all the, uh, concern about the citizenship question, even though it got struck down there, uh, was a deep concern expressed by Office of Financial Management that the count is gonna be depressed this go-around. So that's why they're, uh, trying to get the word out and then also encouraging localities to turn in proposals to potentially add staff to help with this endeavor. Uh, what I've heard is that Sherwood Trust in the county right now, uh, they're developing a plan to essentially jointly put in, uh, grant application to the OFM.
Wow.
Um, and then, yeah, uh, really this is all about working together and creating awareness and, uh, we can put out stuff on our social media and newsletter and so forth, but we just need to make sure that the count's right because a lot of the state assistance money that we get and then part of the statistics as far as figuring out if we're, uh, distrust or not for like utility loans, for example, it all comes down to essentially what is your population poverty rate, all that. You won't get accurate representation unless you get a full account and, uh, I would argue our issue, we have like with the community development block grant, we're only certain little census block groups qualify. I think it was because we were undercounting because there's other communities where a whole community was deemed to be LMI eligible, uh, such as Pullman, for example, and oth- in other areas. Uh, but yet we were not and I think the undercounting is a big part of that when you look at who is in there and who wasn't. Okay, uh, and then this is just the mobilization as far as fostering cooperation, uh, trying to get folks to do the self-respons and then really getting the trust, uh, with folks, which is why, uh, they're given grant programs that essentially have local staff to help on that and then raising awareness of what's at stake. Okay, uh, as far as what, uh, what we can do, the state does have a portal for 2020 census. Um, and it's just educating volunteers and getting the word out that it's really important. And then, uh, one, and then one thing, uh, to take a look at, and Lisa, if you could click on the map document, there's like a hard-to-count area on the map. It's on the map. So they actually made the hard-to-count, um, map for every county in the, uh, state of Washington. It's done by essentially, uh, the census tract and most of College Place is, uh, is in one census tract. Uh, relative to the rest of the area, we're in the middle of the pack, I would say. We're in the last 2010 census. Uh, there was a, roughly about 18% in College Place census tract that didn't respond. Uh, while that isn't great, we actually have better response rate than a lot of other areas in the county. Actually, our response rate in College Place was better than any of the tracks in City Walala because there, uh, quite a few of the census tracks over there were in the bottom part, where it was listed as the dark red. So we do have work to do, but, uh, at least from the last census, uh, folks relative to other areas in the county did participate, but we do have improved.
Mr. Peters?
Do we have the capability through our newsletter or through our communication, Facebook, whatever, social media, to encourage the citizens to participate?
Yeah, yeah, it's in that person, yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, so, it's interesting, I think some people may view it as, once again, I mean, maybe as a assurance from the city that it, and the benefit potentially to the city like you just outlined, you know, it's, um, I know there's sometimes a little, there's some concern perhaps on the citizen question and other times, the age of your population, there could be some skeptic, skepticism as far as who's calling and who's contacting at the door and, you know, so, you know. Around, around the edges.
We do, we do have a number of assisted living facilities, those are particularly difficult, they're concentrated, but. My mother-in-law's.
Or my parents.
You're on the record, Mr. Patter.
Yeah.
The, uh, they'll be difficult to, to deal.
Yeah.
The cell.
Um, one of the things that I would suggest, which is probably in the panel ready, but, is to reach out to the, basically, um, the thought leaders and, you know, bring them in for a little bit of discussion and training and stuff, so they may can reach out. So people like pastors or, um, you know, whoever the, the, whoever a driver is at the assisted living center and.
Or other committees, other, the planning commission and all of those.
As we, as we, as we get closer, unfortunately, you know, it, there's a lot of people who want to start now.
Yeah, it's too soon now.
Putting a plan together, they'll be intense activity in January, February and March. Is, is that goes forward and you'll, you know, we'll start probably in December with census is coming, but it's, it's getting past that then, you know, getting past, but this is something from the government that leads to some of that and we do have more harder reach populations.
Yeah.
And for those, for those undocumented, it's really difficult to reach them and get them to participate all of the benefit probably more than anybody else. Any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Miss Allen?
More of a comment, I was really surprised because, um, with kids in college, I looked up the kids in college thing and they're counted at college, not where their parents are.
Yeah.
So we have a bunch of kids here, we're gonna need to count.
Yeah.
Although it looks like my son isn't gonna get added to New York's total because he's gonna be in Kosovo for six months and that doesn't get counted. If you're out of the, if you're living out of the country, then the census. It seems weird to me.
Yeah.
Except for military.
Well, yeah.
Except for military, yeah.
It's a short-term thing, that seems weird.
It does seem, I agree. But I'm not gonna go to a lot of work.
Yeah, what do we know?
Make New York's numbers bigger.
Yeah. You can make ours.
Any other on census? Well, let's move along to micro-business assistance.
Okay, uh, as you may recall, about the last workshop, there was a status update from Jennifer Beckmeyer, who's, uh, the coordinator over at City Walala about the micro-business, um, program. The first cohort was, uh, very, uh, successful. Uh, in that first cohort initially, there were around close to 18 applications and it was like pared down to around, uh, 12. The second cohort is launching, um, and they're, uh, basically, last time I talked with them, there's about 35 applications. So it's definitely getting the attention of, uh, folks that wanna have smaller businesses. So this is a successful, uh, program and they were requesting additional, uh, funds as part of it. At least with the, uh, statistics that have been provided, essentially around eight person through is about, uh, $7,200. Um, in talking with them as far as funds that they're needing for this cohort, they've identified, uh, other banks and the board and the county where I believe that they should be good this go-around. But I do, uh, I do think it is a policy consideration for going forward into the future fiscal years here where, uh, this is really feeling like an unmet need, I would say, and, uh, potential consideration of, uh, increasing support to this program. Uh, what has happened since that time, uh, is that Mercy Court Northwest, they have opened their, uh, full office here in Walala uh, and they did just hire a coordinator, so there is like full-time support now, uh, to this. So the program definitely is grounded, or I would say for first cohort, we were hoping for the best, but there wasn't really, um, yeah, the back office support to that, but now I would say that we are in Mercy Court Northwest, uh, line of sight where they consider us as like one of the areas that they're gonna be operating in in the long term, so.
Miss Allen?
So they're asking for more money, are they going to make the cohort bigger this time?
That would be the idea, if they get more money, they'll make the cohort bigger.
I'd like, I'd like for us to keep our feet in this, not, not just in the future, but do, up, up our contribution now and then think about how we program for it. I don't know if they have, if Mercy Court's gonna have any projections on how many they can reasonably do.
They're, they're gonna be doing projections, uh, later this year for the third cohort and, and I mean, and I know even though they, uh, had a good amount of money, they were still trying to do another request sooner, but just from an administrative standpoint, I think that's, uh, bad public policy to be jumping every time someone says, hey, go give me, give me more money, especially when the data's not there yet through the, uh, second cohort. So, uh, my recommendation is, uh, that we, uh, should get more, I would say as part of, like, the next budget cycle where you actually have data to read off of and you can make an informed decision and it's just not jumping at some point.
Miss Allen?
Um, just a suggestion to potentially pass on is, I think it would be cool if they could coordinate a little bit with Future Business Leaders of America.
Okay.
Um, I think Walala has a chapter, I know College Place does, and they have access to some really cool speakers and stuff. But not only that, if we want our kids to stay in the valley, having our future business leaders of America students see that there is support for small businesses in the valley is gonna be important.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Peters?
Only tangentially related, not necessarily something we have access to, but one thing I would like to see from them is like the longevity. I would like to see from them is like the longevity of the businesses that they create.
And I definitely think by that data as we're getting into the budget cycle, because right now it's just so early because the first cohort just graduated, you really can't make heads or tails of anything.
Yeah.
Did they fund Segovia Plumbin? That's where I'm.
We, we, we fund, we did fund Segovia Plumbin, but then we also funded LaChelle Strawberry. She has a business here. So it was basically a two-for-one.
Okay, something's, okay.
Well, we don't, we fund, we don't fund individuals. That's, the money goes into the pile. That was just two, the two that came from the city, so.
Yep.
I mean, if it was a, if it's, if it comes down to a quid pro quo, we have to determine, you know, we only fund people from College Place. That's a, that's a no, we can't win in that.
And to, and to your commentary, you know, it's a, it's a long-term commitment. As far as the success of these businesses or not will be measured over, you know, over years, not what just happened last week.
Average small business life cycle's five years. Most of them are going to be gone at the end of five years and we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what the payout is over the long term. Segovia's been in business here since I've been here. So we can continue to kind of take a look and see what happens.
I'd like, I'd like the presentation where they're actually given the backend support of how to run a business, how to, so that it's not positive cash flow for two or three years and then wondering what happened and.
Well, and they're going to start offering other programs as like a backend to this as well. So something that they did in Portland is for businesses that are growing, but let's say they went like an additional investment opportunity is they've actually, Mercy Court Northwest actually made like a low-income real estate investment trust where folks can invest in like real estate assets and then get a return on it. So their REIT has like invested in a bunch of projects. They have significant returns like on Mississippi Avenue and Alberta Street in Portland. So they're really going to be looking at potentially opening that up out in this area as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Rizal? So moving along, translation and childcare services in the city was brought up. Do we want to start doing that? As you all are acutely aware, our participant, our citizen participation.
Is slightly low.
It's, it's disimally low.
About 0.5 on average?
Why, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's being generous.
You gotta be optimistic, Harvey.
Yeah, well, the, we do have a couple of usual suspects that come. And the, the question becomes, do we want to start offering translation services in Spanish as well as childcare? Childcare is somewhat problematic and we really don't have a facility in the city complex to do that because we'd have to license it.
Has the jail been modified?
Well, it'd be good, but it's.
It'd be at least contained.
Right?
Yeah. It's got a toilet.
We have a plan for our space.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that was.
No, it's okay.
I believe I suggested that room, so you're better than me.
So, I mean, there's, there's a couple options, there's a couple options on childcare. Probably the, because we don't have adequate facilities for childcare.
Yeah.
Would be to figure out some kind of voucher system somewhere because we'd have to have licensed childcare.
Well, the, the article that, that was in here was that they're doing it in another boardroom on another level of the.
Yeah, well, when some, when something goes south and you don't have a licensed childcare facility.
Sure, I get that.
Well.
That's a future problem, Harvey.
Yeah, well, that's.
Well, I guess I wanted to, like, I, I'm torn, sorry, may I speak?
You may speak.
I don't want to put the cart before the horse and invest in this huge facility and now we're building a building that has, hosting childcare when nobody's showing up. And would that bring people? I don't know, but how do we?
Well, there's, there's, there's a couple options. One of those is to use a voucher system for childcare.
So they show up here?
They, they show up here, we issue a voucher for a licensed facility. That, that, that gets, that gets the city out of the liability piece. Problem is finding.
At 7:00 PM?
Finding childcare.
For who knows how long? Could be 10 minutes, could be three hours.
Or anywhere from half an hour to three hours.
Right.
Because we just, we simply don't have the kind of facility that's suitable for that in the city complex.
It's like a small business opportunity.
It, it, it may.
For 0.5 people who may or may not have children?
We gotta look at a return on investment here. I mean, is this really going to be worth it to go through?
Well, it's, one of the things that I think is worthwhile asking is, is when we do our survey.
Yeah.
Is to, is to, is to ask the question, okay. We do that. Lisa.
In theory, I like the idea, but in practice, I think as far as childcare goes, you might be better off doing like a live stream where you can watch from home.
You want to videotape our meetings?
Well, we have the second best thing. Everything that, everything's recorded here via audio and posted on YouTube and YouTube also has auto-translate options. It will, their AI will hear what we say as best as possible and attempt to translate it. I've seen it be mediocre to decent before.
Audio is on YouTube, I never realized that.
Yeah. Mike uploads it. So, I mean, we have at least one option there, not only for.
Really? Every meeting?
For accessibility. So we have a contingency plan. If someone can't come.
Yeah.
If someone can't come, we have the ability to listen to the whole thing. They have the materials from board docs that they can look at. And of course, they also have the ability to, you know, contact our city staff if they wanted, if they had any questions. So I feel like we've got a pretty good contingency plan if there are barriers to, to coming in here.
I was going to say something like, you know, we need to reach out to people and find out what's stopping them.
Right.
I think most of them, what's stopping them is they think it's really boring and they don't care.
Probably. There are some people though that don't even realize, like, I was chatting to someone a while ago and I mentioned the mayor and he's like, we have a mayor? Like, we actually have a mayor? Like, I mean, there's some people.
Sad of truth.
Yeah. I didn't even realize that College Place had a council and mayor.
He yells at people.
Has there been a, I didn't read through everything. Has there been a request for this?
There was, it was a comment made by Councilwoman.
Yeah, someone posted an article on Facebook.
Okay.
On Norma's page and so she and I had been talking about it and, and I mean, it's more of a, are there things like this that we can do and/or potentially have in place that would help attract people to show up? And it's, I guess, you know, semi-related to the translation and what can we do to make sure that we're including people who maybe have the barrier of, I want to participate, but I have childcare, childcare issues, or I want to participate, but there's a language barrier. So what are the things that we have available? Obviously, jumping ahead and looking at the translation, it's expensive and so, yeah, we can't just pay to have someone sit here if we don't know if we're going to have a need for it, but yet, anyway, we'll get there. But it's just making sure that people know that we want them to be here and we can try to help.
It's a good discussion, though.
I think translating a lot of our big documents is really important, like the comprehensive plan, that kind of stuff. You know, translating every single board doc's art element, I think, is less important. But I'm thinking like, let's, let's go for the lowest hanging fruit. Like, certainly this is something we could do. I'm inclined to look for like, what are some other ways to engage? Like, if we have, like, all right, what, like, you know, certainly this stuff can be a barrier, but what about the people that just don't know?
Right.
They don't, they don't realize. I feel like if we can, you know, again, remind people through our newsletter when the council meetings are and maybe even tell them what they can and can't do, you know, like, tell us, you know, come to this time to say hello and tell us what your concerns are. It's not a time for a rant. You got like three minutes, but we are happy to hear you. You can also contact us other ways. But like, I feel like there's a few lower hanging fruit, but I do like the idea of translation. I think that's really important, if only for, for a gesture sake and show that our inclusion.
Yes, it's. Translation, auto-translation is somewhat problematic because it's, it's rare, it's, it's never vernacular. It's probably going to be Castile Spanish, which is like us speaking Welsh to people from Mexico. So facility.
I notice if you're looking for us, you can find us under the category of comedy.
You're welcome.
What?
The, the meeting, I'm just looking for the meetings on YouTube to find them and.
What's your point?
I just thought you should know.
It's probably because we laugh so much, so the auto-AI features.
So I, I think that we do a really good job of getting the word out on everything that we're doing in our meetings and I love that there are events on Facebook. I was kind of marveling at a friend at the farmer's market on Thursday who, she's on Facebook all the time, I mean, she's always sharing events and articles and whatever and she's fairly well-connected in the community. She lives, like, her backyard faces Lions Park and she thought that someone was having a party and it just happened to be every Friday or every Thursday, seriously. And on Thursday she came out and saw that it was a farmer's market. She's like, how come I didn't know about this? I've, I have no idea what to tell you. No idea. But I think that people just don't.
Mr. Rizal?
I, I thought I could add to it because, I mean, I worked at Whole Facts, which, you know, people come out when there's tax issue, but then in Beaver then which prides itself for community participation, but even in Beaver then you hardly get anyone to show up unless, unless there was a tax issue mainly because a lot of folks frankly are like my dad, where my dad, the only way he'd ever show up is if it was something having to do with more taxation or utility stuff out of his pocket. And then all of a sudden he'd show up for the rest of the year and be like, man.
Yeah.
So, 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 I mean, I think that has to do a lot with it. And one thing I might add with the childcare part that I found interesting, so I was trying to look up cities in the state of Washington that do or don't do it and there's only one that attended to. And it was the city of Newcastle, Washington, which is a suburb of Seattle. And they actually ended it because what they found is that even though they heavily advertised to put up billboards in town and at the farmer's market, no one showed up. And I guess in one year they blew about 30,000, so.
Yeah.
Because they're fairly well-to-do, so then they.
Not fairly well-to-do.
Well.
Lisa.
I'm trying to remember exactly where it was, but I either recall or made this up in my head that someplace where I was, there was regular meetings, government meetings of some type, and if you needed translation or childcare, you had to like let them know a week in advance. And so that way, you know, you have to sign up essentially for it. And that seemed to me like at least a way to make the cost a little more reasonable. I don't know how practical that is, especially with childcare here.
Yeah.
Because that was on the west side.
Well, it's, trying to, trying to find licensed childcare.
In the evenings?
In the evenings would be interesting. What I would propose is that when we do our annual survey, we craft some, craft some questions to say, would, how could, how could, how could we better serve you and gain your participation in the city afterwards? I mean, it's a, it's a two-edged sword for those who've never been to a City of Walla Walla city council meeting. We, we, we are, we are blessed here. When people do come, they come with a reasonable voice.
Maybe we should make an invitation video where it's like sort of a mock council meeting where we talk a little bit about what we do, how they participate. We can introduce ourselves, say how long we've been on the council and say, please come, please come, please come. And then we could show that on Facebook and they have faces to attach to us and then we could, you know, be targeted in the street kind of thing.
What if we don't want somebody?
Well, bad public officials.
Well, it's, it really is.
That's why we're on comedy.
You know, it's, it's interesting. I, unsolicited, I get people coming up to me and telling us what a great job we're doing. And look at, and look at the people being or not being here and it's either, either an indication of either they think we're doing a great job and there's no need to pray for their input or, because you're doing it all, or, or they really don't understand how cities work and so we can go from there.
Well, they've worked all day and they're really tired.
Definitely.
One of the things from my understanding that keeps people from being involved in government or voting or anything like that is they don't think that their input makes a difference. And so I really like Max's idea of the invitation video and in that I think it would be really good to say, you know, how could your participation make a difference? And, you know, we can talk about things like the plan and, you know, how, how, as we put the plan together, then that does how we spend our money and, you know, all the different stuff.
Well, I mean, one thing we could do is Troy is actually really good at making short videos. So if you go on our YouTube page, we've been doing like project-based one-minute videos on random things. So I'm sure he could help with that because he just did two shoots today, so.
Any other discussion? So we can, Mr. Rizal?
One really, like, one thought I have is that, like, you know, some, some of the council meetings, you know, the topics are pretty mundane, approving something, changing a, you know, some wording in a document somewhere. And I'm thinking that, like, one nice gesture might be to just post, like, just the overall, like, something, this is what, this is what's on the agenda on Facebook. Do we already do that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The agenda?
I don't think I've seen it.
I've been, I've posted occasionally some highlights and stuff that.
When it's good.
When it's good? Oh, okay.
When it's exciting. That should be every week.
Stuff that like would attract people's attention if it's like, hey, we're changing two sentences about like.
We've got a definition.
But like the stormwater utility, that's a good case in point. When that went through, when that went to council last year, that was how Michael Licati found out about it because I posted the, hey, it's coming up and, yeah.
Is it possible, I was thinking this after my conversation last week at the farmer's market, do you have little cards or can we make cheap cards that have either a QR code or like a follow us on Instagram and Facebook with those little links? Because I think that could be helpful at the farmer's market, that if they don't want to snap a QR code, that they actually can have something. That might be a nice, connect with us. Because I'm thinking like Vistaprint, like 10 bucks and just see what we do.
I don't think that'd be that hard than that connect with us. I actually run that message on the breather.
Yeah.
Where actually the QR code I put on that actually works.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I put a QR code.
Because I'd like to have a few of those that we can hand out.
Hiddenness gracious.
Yeah, because I've gotten it off my phone, so.
Oh, sorry.
I need to get a tutorial on how to make my phone take QR codes.
Oh, it's an app?
Yeah.
Well, actually.
QR codes. You know those like little symbols where they got like the squares all over?
Hold the camera off and it should automatically capture it.
Sorry, at the end of the day, I have no sense of humor.
My mind is worse. We're very glazin' course.
Anyway, anything else? Moving right on then, we have had in the last two years. We have had, in the last two years, lots of people requesting money. Started off with fifty thousand dollars for a memorial pool from the city of Walla Walla, then the World War II Memorial, then Gold Star Families, the Easter Powerhouse Theater, micro-business. And the, the question is, and that will lead to, to do some additional work. Some of this, I don't think we can take general funds and just give. It, it's, it's becoming problematic. I think it's becoming problematic enough. We need to, you know, we, we are really only source of, of funds that we can use to encourage tourism and public activities, lodging tax funds, which is, how much a year?
Well, we need enough for Freedom Fest.
I bet that's, it's, it's a couple thousand dollars a year.
It's less than four thousand a year right now, so.
It's, it's, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of money in that to give, to, to donate to things like the powerhouse and, and uh, and we, we continue, we've, we've got another request from somebody to help pay for another power charging station. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we're trying to figure that we're gonna have to deal with, how to deal with this. And the, the question is, is do you want, do you wanna start thinking about setting money aside for these kinds of public donations? Within the limits of what, what talk of the re, about what we can take public funds and donate to.
So, your, your question is, it's sort of the ad hoc type request that we, we could budget into a fund out of.
Out of, budget out.
Out of general fund or some source.
Some, some source to be.
But have an established amount.
Have an established amount.
Versus a one-off.
And, and quit, quit the one-offs because it's, it's. I was approached by, that now the village, the fort, the museum of Fort Walla Walla was looking for money. And it's just gonna go on and on and on. We need to put some rationality into it. Mr. Sely, and then Mr. Sely.
I like the idea of setting some money aside. And I think what we should do is then also have everybody put in at a certain time of year.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that.
So that you don't have, so that they don't dribble in and not what you can prioritize. And I was really supportive of the pool because I think that's a, you know, health issue for us. The powerhouse theater frankly, um, the guy's like, so what are they gonna use it for? And he's like, well, I'm not part of that. I don't know. Well, I'm not gonna give you money if you don't know where it's going. You know? So, um, the micro-business again, I think that's something that has the potential to benefit our citizens and benefit us in terms of additional tax revenue, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Um, so, I think we need to be careful what we do.
Well, that's the reason I'm asking.
Agreed, yeah. Yeah, I like Melody's idea, and I was gonna mention that myself, is have a one-time-a-year application where we gather applications, okay, the window is closed, we can't take any more applications. We have either at a workshop or some sort of subcommittee rank which ones are most promising and have a budget, small budget set aside. Maybe even like, you know, if, you know, if, if legally all we can do is use funds from like the tourism, pull those out and then just replace them with general funds. Cause presumably, general funds we could use for something like Freedom Fest, right? So we could just do a one-two for that potentially.
The lodging tax funds already go through that committee process, the application process, the committee process, all of that.
Oh, okay.
It's already established.
Oh, okay, so that, so we, that's basically, decision-making with that one's hands-off essentially, okay.
Well, it's, it's your guys' ultimate decision. It goes through the lodging tax committee first and it's done that way where applications are submitted during a specific time.
It's a statutory requirement. We're gonna spend lodging tax money, we gotta have an advisory committee.
You know, I think it's, um, I think it's okay to try to ask for everybody to fill out the form for this, but, for these donations. But many of these are not on a cycle. I'm thinking of the Gold Star. I think this was something that came up, popped up. It would have been maybe out of a cycle and it would have been sad if we couldn't have helped with that because it missed the deadline by a month or something on the wrong side. I think the purpose of having an account like this is you set up a budget. You're gonna put fifty thousand in there, you're gonna put ten thousand in there. And when that money is gone, I'm sorry, we can't help you anymore. It's not who comes to the door after that, it's that we've decided as a council that we're gonna put X number of dollars in there. Uh, we will evaluate each request as it comes in. It may be a yes, it may be a no. But when that money is gone, then we can't honor any more requests for the year regardless. And I really, um, you know, I, I, I think sometimes the City of College Place historically, um, well, let me say, I think it's really important that we show integration and, and that we are a part of the broader community outside of the City of College Place. And I think most of these requests have, have, have demonstrated our, our willingness to do that. Be at the pool, be at powerhouse, be at whatever. I think it shows, it shows our community involvement. A broader community involvement, yeah.
Well, that's, it is.
I don't wanna interrupt you. I can go after you.
Go ahead.
Um, my suggestion from the limited amount of conversation I've had with Mike about this and such is that maybe for the last phase of the financial policies, that we draft a policy about what is important for requirements of organizations or just whatever you guys want our money to be going to. We line it out in that policy and say, okay, these are the parameters around what, what we will donate. It has to meet a certain number of these requirements. Put the framework around it, make sure that we don't get off on tangents and that we're, you know, sticking to things that are important to you as the council, for our citizenship, for our piece of the valley or whatever. But I would be happy to facilitate putting that into a policy so that we have guidelines in place and you, it takes some of the pressure off of you guys to, to make judgment calls or whatever. I mean, you, that way you have like some framework to work from.
Well, that's, it's, it's a framework and I am concerned about the ever-increasing number of people walking through the doors saying we'd like. We'd like some, I don't, there's been none of these that aren't worthy of consideration. They all have something to do with the quality of life within the broader community. Pierce has pointed out, it's, I, I, I wanted to put a discussion on the table to say, okay, I think we need to do something with this. And I think Ms. Gilmore's got a perfect idea. We can, we can do that. And we talked with this Culwell about what we can and can't do with the general funds. As far as making sure that we, we don't gift.
In your mind.
And, and end up, they, our hands getting slapped by the other. So we can go from there. Mr. Sely.
Just kinda one counterpoint to something you suggested about like, you know, we don't want them to miss the window, so to speak. But I think it would show a certain degree of planning and forethought. And I know with, I believe with the World War II Memorial, for example, they were gathering funds for a number of years before it was finally able to be implemented. So if you miss something like a four-month window, you know, have eight months to wait until the next one opens. So, I don't feel that's maybe such a large worry that, you know, they're gonna miss the bus and there's one coming, kinda thing.
Well, we have a budget cycle.
Yeah.
And that may be the, this, this, Mr. Sely.
I think, I, I'm a little bit more nervous of doing a grant application type thing. I mean, I like the idea of having it condensed in one time, but I'm also thinking of boards and stuff that I sit on that we're applying for them. And then you hear people that have like stacks. Cause once we have this, then it's, everybody wants to apply for it. And then all of a sudden.
Like it opens the doors.
And I understand like this framework that Sarah would design would kind of help guide that, but it just sounds like more work.
I reiterate, I do have a fear of saying every year, we're gonna, I, I have a fear of becoming a nonprofit that people just look to for funding every year. Like, oh, the city gives away money every year. So, like, I do have a fear of having a regular budget line that this is money that we're gonna put here, that we're gonna give away. So, bring us your requests.
Again, it's, it's policy. Policy may be that we do one time, we don't do recurring. That's what foundations are for.
Exactly. And I mean, that's totally up to you guys as council as to what your, you know, what your feelings are about that. But I do, I do worry about that a little bit.
I think, cause the ones that we've had so far have been the ones like, um, the Gold Star or Powerhouse or some of these others that it's, oh, you wanna ask for money? Well, present. Are all these other groups gonna come and, and try to get on our agenda? I don't, I mean, some probably aren't. And so I kinda think that we're more scary that way. But again, still to have the policy of this is how we're gonna do it. And, and for us, it's, it almost.
That's a good point.
I mean, I like to have the framework, but also wanna know if we don't include that in our budget, but as we get toward, into the year and see, we have a little bit of something. So if someone asks, we could. If they don't, okay.
Yeah, to me, the policy is key, cause a prime example of the city that did it wrong that I lived through was in Beaver then, because they were getting asked a bunch and they decided they were gonna do a call for projects. And it just snowballed. And they actually got to the point where they had no reserves left in their general funds because they, they felt bad. They felt bad because they're very community-oriented. Uh, and now they finally pulled out where they won't do like a standalone budget anymore. It's in their financial policies and they have a rubric system where it's based on a point level that way. But I'm just reiterating that because I saw what happens when that runaway train starts. And uh, it got really scary and bad in Beaver then.
Well, I can, I, it looks to me like the, the engine in the cars are lined up right now. And I'd much rather not have them beat the station.
Feels like 2012 line is.
Mr. Sely.
You wanna do an RFP?
Well, and I think, I, I think it's important to have a rubric to um, look at the projects. But another piece of the policy should be, this only is if we have the money.
Right.
Yep. Um, and so, that's where Sarah and Mike will protect us from ourselves because then if we don't have the money, they don't get on the agenda.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter how sorry we feel for them.
Right.
Mr. Sely.
Well, just a quick follow-up. We don't have the money. I mean, if we have eight million in our general fund, I mean, it's.
Well, it's budgeted. If it's budgeted.
Right.
See, yeah, that's a little bit problematic from my perspective is, um, I mean, maybe we could wait till the next year to see if we had a budget excess from the previous year that, um, I don't know. Like, if it's not in the budget, like if it's not budgeted, it's hard for me to say we have the money for that. Because if revenues end up coming in over expenditures, to me, that's like savings account money. We put it in fund balance and save it up for something. So.
Or we hire another person.
Or, yeah, so I, um, I mean, this is all stuff that we could talk through the policy, you know, like where is this? How do we determine if we have extra money to do this? And when do we determine we're gonna spend it and that kinda thing, but.
And what are the other things that we should be looking at putting the money aside for?
Yeah. And you know, maybe it goes, maybe it's a revision to our budgeting policies, section of the financial policies too. To, you know, like a ranking system as far as this is what we, these are the most important things and they go in this order. And if we have anything left and we're down at the bottom, then we, you know, I don't know.
Well, neither do I and it was, I just got concerned as.
Yeah.
The number of requests picked up in ten thousand here, ten thousand there.
Right.
And it's not like we don't have projects or departments to invest in already.
Well, I mean, that's the problem with our current expense fund. That's also what pays police, fire. Uh, our recreation activities, which a lot of people have been participating in. If we're building that, I mean, the majority of that's gonna be again, current expense money funded.
So, it looks like what we'll think about doing is Ms. Gilmore is going to kinda sculpt what she thinks it looks like. We'll sit down, put some, put some more thought to it and come back with you in the financial policies. Here's what we think, here's the, here's the kinda rubric we have.
Good discussion.
Mr. Sely.
I'm kinda curious, like, what does Walla Walla do, for example? Or do people ever request grants or whatnot from a kinda commissioner?
Well, I, I can take part of it. Keep in mind, Walla Walla is a very unique situation because they're big enough where they get a direct allocation, a community development block grant dollars. So if you're above the population, about twenty thousand, you can petition and get your own direct allocation. So like right now, how we're funding our part of micro-business out of the current expense, they, they were able to fund their full eighty thousand dollars that they put into it just off of their direct CDVG allocation. But we can't do that cause we're small, we're too small. And then we have to fight everyone else in the state to try to get our piece.
The other piece of it is, is they have a huge lodging tax income.
So let me rephrase the question then.
And they do a grant application process where all of these agencies apply and then they have a committee that meets and then the council.
But they have a dedicated funding source then. So, so that changes the question to what is a good example or what is an example or not to do regarding requests for, for grant money, more or less, with, with regard to a smaller city.
I think for us, it's recurring. It's, it's, it's areas, it's providing funding that doesn't support the general public. It's, it's, it's looking, it's looking at what you, what one-time unique funding can we do to improve the quality of life for either our citizens or for the citizenry in general. You know, the, Walla Walla came to us and asked for fifty thousand dollars for the pool cause they thought they were gonna run in the red and operate their pools. That's what had happened in the past. Well, they never came back to us and said, oh, by the way, we're making so much more money off that pool than we thought. They're actually, they're actually making money, money from the pool, which is almost unheard of. But, you know, that's the commitment that we make. Skip that. But it's, you know, I think we're gonna have to kinda take a look at it as things as they come across. So far, you know, the Gold Star Monument, the Gold Star Families, the World War II Memorial, the Memorial Pool, all kinds of things that in general support the quality of life and honor the, the citizens and the community. We just have to see what, what comes up. But I, I think the big thing is, is we're not a, we're not a foundation that provides recurring funding to not-for-profits. We'll kinda work through there. The, the thing that separates us from the city of Walla Walla is their lodging tax is phenomenal and the, the community development block grant.
I get two point five million off of their direct application of CDVG.
And they have a lot of economy based on tourism. At this point, we don't even have a hotel.
Well, I was just gonna say, like, this would be great for us to have a policy written even for the lodging tax dollars. Or do we have that that's already set for what we do?
That's for our community outreach type of thing.
With codes.
Yeah. Code is all set. It's ready to go if something were.
I'd hope we get a hotel. We'll have a little more money. Anything else? Mr. Rizzello.
Okay, House Bill fourteen oh six, affordable housing revenue. This thing is coming through quick, so apologize about that, but that's what the state legislature does. So, uh, what they decided to do this last legislative session is to offer this program where what cities can do is essentially file a resolution, then file an ordinance. And what that would do is you get to keep the state portion, a, a certain percentage of the state portion of what they collect in sales tax to be used for affordable housing activities. So, uh, for us, because we don't love being affordable housing tax, it ends up being like zero point zero zero seven three percent, which on. which ends up amounting to like ten thousand a year. Uh, however, in this case, like, if we were to do that, you can either use it to partner with someone to develop affordable housing, or to do an inter-local with someone for operation and maintenance of affordable housing, or to use it toward rental vouchers. So, for instance, an inter-local could be negotiated with Blue Mountain Action Council to help in that endeavor. Uh, this revenue that comes off this program, because they actually wanna start seeing it do stuff, there's very strict timelines to acquire this revenue. Uh, so to file the resolution, that has to be done between July twenty eighth and then January thirty first, and then you basically have up until the following July to enact the ordinance. And again, it's just a credit off of a certain percentage of what the state collects in sales tax, so it's not an additional tax. Um, so yeah, there's a resolution, ordinance that takes that into account. There's a handout that graphically goes over the various examples for areas that have a housing tax or a chemical dependency tax. You have the ability to essentially double the amount that you would get from the state. And once this passes, that's money that's for affordable housing, it's authorized for the next twenty years. Uh, and if you miss the window to participate in this, you're frankly out of luck after this window period. So, uh, they opened this up because state legislature, they had a number of senators and representatives to Association of Washington Cities, and they viewed this as a statewide emergency. So that's why they, they put all these windows in it to try and get the money out the door quickly.
Questions for Mr. Green? Will be doing that in August?
Uh, yeah, August.
Okay, yeah. Coming up in August for this, yeah, gotcha.
I was just gonna comment that I think anything we can do for affordable housing is gonna be helpful. But, um, one of the things I'd like us to consider, and Norma and I were talking about this, that to rent an apartment, they expect you to have perfect credit, not smoke, and have no pets.
Or kids.
Or kids. And it's just like, um, you know, not that we encourage it, but people smoke, um, and...
Have pets.
Have pets. And pets are a really important part of, um, you know, your mental health and everything else, so, um... Anything we can do to make it so that there's a little more flexibility, I don't know how we would do that. I have no idea how we would do that. But anyway, if we encourage people to do that, it would be helpful.
I mean, I mean, if we did inter-local with Blue Mountain Action Council, I, I mean, I'd have to talk with our attorney if I suppose we could put something in there. Uh, I mean, beyond that, the only thing, uh, you could put that stuff in is basically like a code, but that would get really messy really quick, uh, yeah.
I feel like that'd come down more to like BMAC's policies, about who they wanna like partner with.
Well, but it, it's, it's, it really comes down to landlords. BMAC has some housing, along with comprehensive healthcare, has some housing. But the, as, as landlords go to property management, a lot of property managers don't wanna deal with kids, dogs, smokers, and so... Rental, rental houses around where I live have all of a sudden gone, no smoking, no kids, no pets.
High FICO.
Because the, the owners now, you know, turn over all of his property management to somebody else, and they're just, no, sorry, we're not gonna deal with it. So...
I, I don't know about kids, but, um, I discovered it's actually amazingly easy to get a letter saying that you need pets from your doctor, and then they have to let you have them. So I'm currently renting a no pets allowed apartment with two cats because my psychiatrist says I need them.
You have, you have a prescription for them.
Yes.
Well, I mean, when I moved here, where we ended up, we ended up there 'cause of the timetable, the only place that will allow us to have the beer runs, so, yeah.
You know, it's just a, it's a, it is interesting the dynamic all our cities are going through with this. You know, like in the Seattle area, and also here, the house has become less affordable, um, people are looking to rent. It drives demand with the rent, the rent prices skyrocket. You have homelessness then, you have some of these other issues that occur because people can't afford the sixteen hundred dollar monthly rent on a one-bedroom apartment or something, you know, in these areas. And so, yeah, it is a, yeah, so whatever we can do, I agree with, uh...
Well, we can press for...
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's with us for a while.
And, and just to let you all know, I'm already talking with Kathy Kofi about what the inter-local would look like. Um, I believe there may be an overture by some other parties as well. However, Blue Mountain Action Council actually like has a plan and a strategy for college place, so that would be staff recommendation about the brands you go on and have.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And last item on the agenda was Mr. Gordon in Garrison Creek Cleanup.
Yeah, I'm covering that one, so...
Off you go.
Yep. So, as part of our stormwater, you tell the criteria of the National Platoon Discharge Elimination System, municipal separate storm sewer, MS four permit, is that we have to have public outreach activity pertaining to cleanup of waterways and conveyance areas for our stormwater system. So as such, we're basically mimicking a program that, uh, I worked on when I was in the Urbana called Boneyard Creek Cleanup Day, so this one's instead, Boneyard Creek is Garrison Creek Cleanup Day. And we're partnering with the Lions Club, they'll help clean up the stretch in Lions Park. Also, Villages of Garrison Creek HOA will be doing some work in their portion, and then the Wawa Walla Noon Rotherie is helping, and the part that goes along Tenth Street from Birch to Babe. Uh, so that will be Sunday, July twenty first at one to five P M, so...
Questions? Get your waders on.
Is this the new Rob's last name? I don't think I knew that. I didn't know that this person was connected with the city. Enslie, that's the new Rob? Okay.
Yep.
Kind of, kind of a related question, um, it could be Garrison Creek that I'm looking at that's had out there. Does, Mike, and you may not know the answer to this, that's fine, but I, I certainly don't. Um, do the guidelines that dictate, I'll put it in the broader sense of maybe stormwater, but do the, do the guidelines affect the county like they do the cities? And I guess, I was, behind Babe, I was out walking, and I saw where many trees have been cut down that were alongside of, I think Garrison Creek, down east of us. And I was wondering about water temperature, shade, are there any requirements? Are we restricted also on what we can do alongside the creeks as far as taking down trees?
Well, well, I mean, you, you have to be careful with, and there's certain times of the year where you can't be anywhere like in the creek per se, because there's like a certain timeframe where they say fish are spawning, even I have seen one in there. But, uh, like, for instance, we were gonna have this cleanup day, actually a bit a couple weeks earlier, and then believe it or not, uh, fish and wildlife caught on to us and said, you can't do it, you better change the date. So then we moved it back later. Uh, so, so yeah, I mean, and it's four counties as well, so, uh, both cities and counties, there's basically two manuals that localities fall under. So everything west of Cascades falls under the Western Washington manual, and then we're under Eastern Washington manual. And then, uh, as far as how strict the various agencies follow that, I mean, it's up to each, um, really locality, but the thing, like in our example, uh, if you don't follow it strictly, then you end up in a call from DNR anyway, you end up having to, so...
So I guess my, yeah, that was kind of a tortured question I asked you, but, uh, counties are also cognitively attached to this whole stormwater issue also as far as...
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Rosello? Any other business from the council?
I have something that I thought you guys might find interesting, um, if you don't mind. It's related to the banking services. Um, I got an email this evening, just before the meeting, from Community Bank, and they've been working on putting together an interest earnings plan for us. And they are willing to give us, their normal savings account only has an interest rate of point zero seven or point zero eight. I mean, it's really pitiful, but they've been working on a proposal for us where they, let me find it. I, I wanna give you the rate correctly here, so, um, they have approved a special account for us.
What's up for fifteen percent?
With, that they'll allow us to maintain up to two million dollars in, um, at...
Maximum?
Two million dollar maximum in the savings, and it'll be a sweep attached to our checking account. And I believe, if I can get this to download and open, so it's like...
Is there a minimum to have in that account, or is that just where you keep like two million dollars?
Uh, minimum is five hundred. I can't get it to open on my phone, but anyway, I believe it's two point six nine percent.
Wow.
Wow.
So, um, don't quote me, 'cause I can't get it to open, but I'm pretty sure that was the rate, which is really good.
Yeah.
Between zero and one hundred, right?
For that dollar amount, up to two million, uh, that's a really good rate, so... And that's basically like almost, like having our money in LGIP, but in our own local bank attached to our checking account, so...
That would almost completely, we'd have to wait and see what the details are here, but that would gap, that would more, that might, that would close the gap on...
I believe so, I'll have to, I haven't had time to crunch the numbers yet, but I will bring those back to the meeting for you next week, so...
Sounds good, thank you.
I thought you might find that of interest.
Yeah, that is...
It's exciting?
Yeah.
Yep.
They're bending over backwards for our business, so...
And they paid for fire boards.
They also, um, in addition... In addition to that, they offered us to do a laddered CD of short-term CDs, so a laddered schedule of short-term CDs at their CD rates for any excess savings over the two million that we have, that we would like to invest at a higher rate than that savings account.
What do we normally have in a savings account?
Dollar wise?
Mm-hmm.
Um, about three, I think we've had about three and a half million in savings accounts typically at the bank, so...
I've been using, um, Community Bank with Exchange Club since I became a treasurer a year and a half ago, and they've been really great with customer service. Um, some things are a bit archaic from what I'm used to using other larger banks. Um, one thing specifically, like, obviously, I think that we'll be okay on minimums, but like, we have, you know, when we're doing Duffy Derby, we'll have over a hundred thousand dollars in checking accounts, and one was down to like nineteen hundred, and I got this like twenty-five dollar fee, and I had to go through like hoops to get that refunded, and to, I don't even, I think I did, but it was like, well, you have to have a minimum of twenty-five hundred, I'm like, are you freaking... Like, okay, so now I just maintain that, but that part was kind of like, hey, we know people that are all in this bank, like, so... That part was frustrating to me, but the rest has been really good. I emailed one of the personal bankers every Sunday and say, transfer all these things, and Monday morning I get an email and they've all been done, 'cause I can't do it online, 'cause it's super archaic.
Really?
Hmm.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I'm not looking at that. I don't know if it's just our account, but I can't transfer between...
Any other business?
Harvey doesn't wanna talk about it anymore.
Okay.
Well, but, we haven't got a contract yet.
No.
Thing done, is there a motion to return, Miss Elton?
Oh, I just had a question about the shirts, are we supposed to look at the shirts here?
Yeah.
We'll do that out. Off record. Tell me directly.
So...
So, second?
Second.
We are adjourned.